Call to order, the Pennington County County Commission meeting for, what's the date, Holy?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, April twenty-third, 2019. We'll have a moment of silent reflection and a pledge of allegiance led by Ron Roskinect.
Silence, your phones first.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we'll have a review and reapproval of the agenda. Do we have a motion, please?
It's a move.
Moved by La Croix, second by Roskinect. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is 164th Avenue Bridge. Discussion, and... Your name, sir?
Morning, Commissioner, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway. Alright, so as you said, we're here to discuss the 164th Bridge replacement. Let's see if I can get organized here. So, I talked to a couple, you know, a couple commissioners and sat down last week and this weekend and kinda put together some some reasons to to put the bridge back or replace the bridge and some reasons to to build that section line and I was just gonna share those with you and then at the beginning of the meeting I shared it all or with you all a hundred-year cost analysis. Basically, a like hundred-year life cycle, what it'll cost over the the next hundred years. Kind of the easiest way I kinda thought to put it in perspective as far as, you know, which building a road or building a bridge, so. Reason to to replace a bridge, I guess, you know, there's two landowners that it really benefits. Over there, you know, their property is split up on each side of that creek and the one homeowner or the one landowner lives on the other side of the creek, so he uses that bridge on a daily basis and then, you know, the other landowner is split up and has cattle over there and would have to cross the the creek in another manner. We wouldn't have the cost to to maintain the section line or the road if we were to build that, which is about fifty-seven hundred dollars a year right now. We wouldn't have that. But, so, those are the reasons to to build that bridge. Reasons not to build a bridge, I came up with several here, I guess, or we'll have to have the bridge replaced in the future again at some point, right? Bridges have a life cycle, some shorter, some longer. Most, as we all know, most of our bridges are at the end of their life cycle after the the seventy-two flood. You know, and then at the end of that life cycle, the most bridges get weight restrictions. So they won't have, won't be able to haul full loads of hay or cattle or anything across the bridge at the end of its life cycle. You know, if a single-lane bridge is is built, it it may not possibly support future development back in the, in that area. Whereas a road would. The annual maintenance cost of a of a bridge is about fifteen hundred dollars a year. We don't have any other steel bridges or of its kind in in Pennington County other than fourteen sixteen. We have to inspect the, each of our bridges biannually. Cost for our share of this is about a hundred and sixty dollars per bridge for our share. Total cost is actually about eight hundred dollars a year. The state pitches in quite a bit for that. So next, I'll go on to the reasons to build the section line road. Our out-of-pocket costs would be about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Reason for that being, we have money for fuel, we have the gravel already at a pit approximately ten miles away. Our labor is already built into our budget, so above and beyond our our budget, the new money we'd have to come up with is about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. The section line road would be a permanent solution and support any future development back in the area. There's several landowners back there that we think it would better serve, they'd have permanent access. And they, you know, they wouldn't have to worry about if a bridge collapses a year from now or ten years from now. They, it could possibly increase the the property value of the adjacent properties. Having better access and not having to cross a a one-lane bridge. And then, the liability of a future bridge collapse would be removed at that, with that. Now, onto the negatives about building the section line road. We'd have to maintain the road every year. That approximate cost of fifty-seven hundred dollars. We need to have it gravled about every eight years, which consists of about forty-two hundred tons of gravel for a two-inch lift, which all of our gravel roads get. Talking to the foreman out there and some of the landowners, the snow removal operations could get difficult in the the heavy snow periods. Some of the draws are pretty deep and and, you know, could pose a, an issue with the with the drifts there and getting the snow off the road. It would be an additional three miles of road to maintain on top of our already eight-hundred-and-thirty-six miles of road. There would be more, more wear and tear, though it would be minimal on roads such as fourteen sixteen and one-hundred-and-sixty-first Avenue. And then, the two landowners, you know, that have their property split would have possibly higher travel times during the high-water situations when they wouldn't be able to use their their low-water crossings. With that, we gave you guys all a hundred-year life cycle there, kinda explained a little bit of that. The gravel road, the the total cost over the a hundred years is about thirteen and a half million dollars. Just a note on that, our maintenance is our biggest cost on that. In a hundred years, it'd cost about a hundred and eight thousand dollars to maintain a a mile of gravel with inflation and kinda extrapolating that out at three percent a year. The concrete structure would be about fifteen point seven million, now that's a fully-designed two-lane bridge structure. At a cost of about a half a million dollars right now for the initial cost. Replacing that three times, the initial time, then fifty years, and then in a hundred years. And then the steel bridge or the modular construction, we'd be replacing that four times. You know, in an initial time and then every thirty-three and a half years after that. That was kind of a a number we pulled out, talking with our engineers and Brandon, our engineer, is here today, if you'd like to talk to him and Jack Corr from Corr Construction is also here, so just kinda talking to those guys and we don't really know the life cycle of one of these modular bridges and kinda reaching out to some of the I guess, the manufacturers, they don't really have a a good life cycle on them, I should say. Or any information to back it up. With that, I guess I will open it up for any questions.
Any questions?
Madam Chair. Joe, I think one of the things that we have to look at is timeframe. Which one of these three options would be the quickest to provide access to the folks out there?
Uh, with, you know, if Mother Nature allows, we we feel we could probably get the the section line road built, you know, by middle of June, end of June. And then, you know, the, with another month, Jack from Corr Construction said he could get the modular bridge in place by the end of July, so.
So the timing are pretty similar to the two options?
Yes.
And another thing I looked at was, when it's all said and done, option one, option two, where's the greatest benefit? And when I looked at it, I liked the idea of replacing the bridge, but then the section line would provide about seven miles of access. Good access, year-round access to those properties to the north and to the south. So I see the greatest benefit to the property owners adjacent to the section line directly to the north and directly to the south. There's one, there's about seven property owners that I see that that would benefit and there's a parcel owned by the USA. So that's, those are the things that I'm looking at.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do we have someone from the public who would like to speak? On this issue? Do we have a motion? Oh, coming up, sir. Your name?
Rowdy Rob Schaefer.
Real name?
Rob Schaefer.
Oh, I thought you said Rowdy, Rowdy Schaefer. You did.
When we talked last meeting, I didn't want to give you all the impression that I expected a a flat racetrack out there, I was just talking about maintaining the the ridges in the road, basically. Not tearing up the grass, not doing any of that stuff. So, I just wanted to let you know that I wasn't even close to thinking we should do a strip through there like that, but either way, it's, it's important to us to get in and out of our property. Another fence crew came in last week. Just when I thought it was gonna get dry enough to come in and they ratted it all up again, so. Unfortunately, it wasn't my fence crew that came in, so he couldn't come in again this week, so. That's all I'm looking for, is access to home.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
To let you know, we did, we were out there on on Monday to look at that, you know, with the rain over the weekend, it was it muddied it up, so. We are definitely looking at it and trying to get out there as soon as we can.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinect.
I'm gonna speak to this gentleman.
Mr. Schaefer.
Hey, Robert.
Yes.
If they, if if we did the bridge, and once you get across the bridge going south, you can go about a half mile and that's where you turn west on the section line, right?
I think it is about half a mile, isn't it?
Approximately, yes.
To go north.
So, if the bridge was replaced and and one, and then it was a wet situation like you were talking about, so if they could go across the bridge and then get to that section line, and then they had to start going west, if that was wet, they still would not be able to get to those properties.
I built that road from the corner down to our place on two-hundred-and-thirtieth. So it is pretty tore up right now, but
But after that, it's
But I've maintained that road and we can still get in and out of there.
But after that, it's no man's land.
After that, it's dirt, right.
And that's what I was thinking, is to try to benefit the people, that three-mile stretch that lays west of your property. We're just kicking tires.
Any other questions? Any other
No, thank you.
Questions? Do you have a motion or a, any other discussion, please?
I think we got a couple motions we need to take care of, first of all.
Commissioner Drew?
So I would make a motion that we declare the collapse of Bridge fifty-two dash six forty-five dash three oh five as an emergency, as a safe alternate access route. And is not available to at least five local residents.
So that'd be a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Drew, second by Roskinect, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd follow that with a motion to request that the the current bridge, collapsed bridge, has surplus for the purpose of disposal.
A motion by Drews, is there a second?
Second.
Second by La Croix, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next motion?
So with the next motions here, there are, there's two from Corr Construction. One to use the Bradsky Road Bridge that was used as a detour. And in talking to him, he talked to his engineers and maybe he'd like to come up and and speak a little bit more to it, but that bridge on, that was used as a temporary bypass on Bradsky Road would not be a I guess, a wise decision to put into place as a permanent, just because due to the nature of the construction. There's some parts that are open to the elements that on a constructed bridge would not, would not be there, so. These are just kinda some options, I guess, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions from Jack from Corr Construction? Anybody have a motion?
I, I think we prob, I have questions for Corr Construction.
Okay, sir?
Madam Chair, while he's coming up, if I could just state from my own opinion, I do think that the bridge, in my opinion, the bridge needs to be replaced. Whether we do anything with the road or not.
I'll have to agree with that.
Jack Corr, Corr Construction. I would like to make a comment on the longevity of the bridge. I'm not necessarily here selling the bridge that we offered, but I talked to our designers and some of these original single-lane bridges of this exact design were built in Alaska in nineteen eighty-four and are in perfect working condition today, so that's thirty-five years, so. The thirty-three-year lifespan is short at best. Lifespans are, and I've talked to them designers, lifespans are a hard thing to when you see some of the other designers say we got a seventy-five-year design life or you know, everything's made of steel, concrete, and rebar, right? Every bridge out there and lifespans are mostly diminished by the elements, you know. Obviously, bare steel bridges in Florida probably aren't the best idea because they have high humidity situation. Our bridges are mostly deteriorated by corrosion in our rebar, which is our sand and salt we use. Your road out there probably doesn't get salted very often, I guess. So, as far as the lifespan of that bridge, i- it is a little bit of a difficult subject, but you're not gonna replace that bridge in thirty-three years, or in no way.
Are there warranties on these bridges?
No, you know, the we could talk a little bit about it, a short term, in in the highway world, we don't, just like the bridge we built for you on Bradsky Road, you know, everything is inspected and certified and built per the design. When we drive away, it's yours, right, or the state's or whatever your agreement is with them. So there, there really isn't, this is a little different situation, I as far as like a fifty-year guarantee, no.
No, usually most people for a first year or something, you know, if
Yeah, so
you know what I'm saying, to be
And we could surely entertain that because this is obviously somewhat of a unique scenario. You know, when we're working for you guys or the state, you know, they're testing every material we're certifying. And we would provide certs and material testing for the product that we gave and we could sure talk about a one-year guarantee or something to add for workmanship. As far as the bridge goes, I went out and did some measurements and stuff yesterday. The bridge that we're proposing is a little bit shorter than what's out there. However, the, these bridges are what we call a vertical abutment bridge. So the opening under the bridge is is a square opening where you're just like out there, you know, you're typically what they have is a slope down next to the first spans. We're not offering any hydrology study or guarantee, but definitely this bridge that we're proposing would have equal to or greater than of an opening under the bridge. It may require us to raise it up a little bit, which would require a little bit of grading, but it it would it would have equal to or greater than capacity than what you have now. The key thing is getting that center bent out of there, right, that center span, that's what causes trash to hang up. That's what happened to it there, right, ice jams, you know, the the single, simple-span bridges are and it's a, it's a good solution for for some of these secondary roads, you know, we've been building bridges for twenty years and I can't tell you the number of half-a-million-dollar bridges we've built out on that particular road or road just like that, right? Because that's where you end up, you guys, you know, it has to go through the federal highway system and all the federal highway rules are applicable, so we end up with this you know, giant highway bridge out on a one-lane gravel road and and it probably does, as far as expansion goes to, you know, these are it is actually an expandable bridge, right, so we could take the center rail down and pretty much build that same sixteen-foot bridge next to the one you have and and it is expandable as far as future development.
That's something I didn't know, I guess. Appreciate that.
Any questions for Jack?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
Jack, I know, asking your opinion, but you're the one that's got the bridge experience. Could, do you think we could legitimately look at fifty, sixty, seventy years for the lifespan of a bridge like this?
Yeah, I do. I, I think even beyond, I mean, how old's the bridge you got out there?
Seventy years this year.
And it's wood piling?
Wood structure.
So, you know, it, it, materials are materials, right, these are the same grade fifty certified, it's, it's got a HL ninety-three design life, it's the same design as as a normal highway bridge, it's just one lane and talking to Joe and Mark, I mean, what the pressure I got is you guys are looking for a cost-effective solution to a so the bridge is basically the same, the same width as what's out there?
Correct.
Other than you're gonna lose a little bit because of the railing. What you have out there now is just wood railing nailed to the sides, so it doesn't take up much of the deck width, but our railing wood.
And the bridge out, that's out there is actually fifteen foot wide and the one you're proposing is sixteen, correct?
Sixteen, and then the rails sit on top, so you'd lose, you'd have about a fourteen-foot clear. And I know a lot, I watched your tape from the last meeting, I know there was one landowner that was a little concerned about width and getting farm equipment and I mean, obviously you're not gonna pull a twenty-foot swath through across the fourteen-foot bridge, but I don't know. Most of the bridge rails are typically short enough to haul hay trucks and whatever else and so.
Mount a weight that you can put on that bridge?
It's a full highway design bridge, so no difference from Bradsky Road or if if there's overweight vehicles, you know, they're supposed to go through a permitting process. I don't know, you guys actually have an over-width overweight.
Correct, we do.
Perfect.
So
So it's a full, it's just, it's the same design criteria as Bradsky Road or any other highway bridge you drive on.
Would you use one of the current abutments that
The price that I gave you guys is for new abutments.
New abutments.
The problem with the problem with using them is you guys or some engineer would have to then take responsibility for that whole entire structure, right, because now all of a sudden we're putting it on you. We can't verify the quality of that.
Right, okay, thank you.
And the other thing I wanted to make a little clear is, you know, from a design, the reason the cost is what it is is because we've already, this, we have a stamp set of engineered drawings for this bridge. We just have to go back to our designer and have him make it a little bit more of a site-specific. However, it is, it is just for the bridge, right, the bridge and the bridge rail have crash-tested railings and HL ninety-three design, but it's not site-specific, we're not representing that we're we know anything or or about hydrology or the site or any of that. Erosion outside of the bridge itself.
Sure.
I mean, there's nothing there now, but I just don't wanna represent something we're not.
Thank you, Ron Roskinect.
Madam Chair. Jack, you were saying there's one up in Alaska. You know, the one out at one sixty-four, I don't assume that's gonna get nearly the use that the one in Alaska. I might be wrong, but I would think the longevity of the bridge would be directly related to how many times a day that bridge is being used, which to me would increase the life. Maybe the one, that one sixty-fourth opposed to the one in Alaska.
Yeah, um, use would have some, you know, heavy use would have probably some detriment to it, they have actually over a dozen of them up in in the Alaska country, you know, a lot of it's logging-based or that kind of stuff, but that's where this designer originally started building these particular bridges, so you know, I couldn't really speak to that, I'm not a professional engineer or from common sense stance, I would say you're correct, right? Weather and use are probably your big
Would the county plow go across that, okay, Joe?
Should be, yes.
Okay. Just one more question, when you develop the cost estimate on that, do you do it on price per foot or price per cubic feet?
No, I, we just go through and, just like if you guys issued a set of plans to build a new bridge, you know, we just put together a cost estimate and, you know, not really per foot, you probably could on this particular bridge, but, you know, we just look at the cost to drive the pile, the cost to buy the materials and and on mine, there's, I put on your quote there, an alternate for the removal, just, there isn't a lot of, wasn't really a lot of discussion about that removal, so we could look at, a lot of times when we bid those projects, there will be a discussion about removal, whether it it has to be taken apart and salvaged and given to the landowner or taken apart and salvaged and the county comes and gets it. So basically, that price to remove is it's just gonna be all gone and we're gonna take it away, right, so if you if you want, if Joe wanted to work with us and say, hey, just take your crane and hoist it out there and we'll deal with it some other time or something like that, then we could talk about that.
We could get our trucks there and set it on their trucks and
Something to that nature, yeah, if you just wanted to hoist it off and said I can tell you from, I've been to a lot of the surplus county auctions and people love bridge material.
Thank you, Jack.
Madam Chair. Commissioner La Croix first, Mark, please.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I got, I have two questions. From the looks of it, it's like a fifty thousand dollar difference between building new and using the br, old Bradsky Bridge, correct?
Yep.
And, and you're talking that you recommend building new that instead of the Bradsky, using the Bradsky because of
So just the way the deck panels are are designed and it's, it's really designed to be put in place and taken out, so there's a lot of seams where you know, water could sit on top of those beams and enhance the corrosion part of it, so the other bridge, it'll have a complete concrete deck when it's done.
So that's the, pretty much the main difference.
Yeah, and I've already, you know, those materials, we've absorbed some of the cost of that at the Bradsky project, so basically it's a, it's a discount on those materials is what it is.
My second question is for Joe. Joe, where would the funding come from for the bridge?
We would have to pull that from reserves.
Out of the reserves?
Yes.
Anything else that would have to be held back on?
No, not at this time, we have, even leftover from last year, we have about one point two or one point three in our reserves that were unallocated from last year. We've currently, with our equipment purchases, and this year is about, I think, about eight fifty or nine hundred, so we would be
One more follow-up question. So if we went with the new, which would be right around a hundred and eighty-one thousand including the removal.
It'd be about a hundred and seventy with that removal, I've already added that removal in there.
Oh, that one sixty-nine is with
With removal, yes.
Okay, I was adding it with the alternates, what I was doing. So as he stated, if if they loaded it up and the county brings it back, we could save twelve? Or is there still
Probably have a little, yeah, we probably have a little cost and some crane work and rigging it and we'd have to disassemble it and so there'd be a little, but I'm sure it would be significantly less.
So would, is that actually worth our time or is that gonna create more of a work for us than well, we're gonna have to take it anyhow, you're just talking
No, the price there would be, it would all be gone and
Okay.
It's ours and we'll
Okay.
We'll either, we'll do what we, yeah.
Was, is that the better option, Joe?
It, we'd have to look at how it's gonna come apart and our trucks, right, we don't have flat beds, so we'd have to, to look at how it's gonna come apart and see if our our side dumps would be able to to handle that.
My only thought on this, folks, is that I see from working with stuff that we save, it ends up sitting there for longer and it creates more work than it's, it's worth, so I think twelve thousand's probably a good
And I will, you know, I guess, I have already had a landowner approach me about wanting that bridge, so.
Yeah.
The, the old bridge, yeah.
Okay. It's pretty common.
Commissioner La Croix, do you have a follow-up?
That's
Commissioner DeSanto?
Follow-up on what Joe just commented on, is that landowner willing to, if we have them remove it and set it there, will the landowner come and get it?
He may, you know, I, I haven't, we, kinda waiting for this to figure out what we were gonna do with the bridge to to kind of proceed that a little further, so I never I told him that after this, we we could discuss it and and figure that out.
Well, I think that, I don't know if the rest of you would agree, but if, if that landowner's willing to come and get the bridge, we should just have them remove it, set it there, and let him come and take care of that, and then we don't have the problem with it sitting in the yard or having to put it up for auction or anything like that and we still save a little bit of money. I get, my second question is, the old, the temporary that you used at Bradsky Bridge and this new bridge, what would be the difference in longevity? And I know you said that you, you're gonna have
You know, it's
leakage down through the cracks and it's
Right.
gonna cause corrosion and
It would be a, a virtually impossible for me to really answer that, you know. It would be a, a very impossible for me to really answer that, you know. Each weather cycle could, could dictate that, um. Is there something additional we could look at doing to that bridge deck, maybe, to help ensure a little bit of longevity, um?
We're not using salt out there, I.
Yeah, I get it. Um, some of it is just, you know, water, and we've even done some rehabilitation projects for the state where they used to have a steel seam in some of their old bridges and that water runs and just constantly is running on top of that structural beam underneath, and it just eventually just creates a lot of problems and
Okay.
Is there some things we could do, probably for fifty thousand bucks to ensure a, a little, a, a little insurance and reassurance, I, I would recommend not using that Bradsky Road Bridge. However, talking to those guys, the designers, they said that they've had some logging contracts where they've done that exact same thing, intent was to put the temporary bridge in, leave it sit there until the next logging contract comes up, and then move it, and they're fifteen years down the road and they're still sitting there. And they're still in, in pretty good quality shape, right? So to speak to the extent of it, I really shouldn't, um, I'm just when I brought it up to our designer, um, he just said, you know, I would recommend if they want a permanent bridge, to build them a permanent bridge and.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'm gonna throw this out, um, I'd make a motion to accept the proposal from Core Construction Services, in, for construct a sixteen by sixty length concrete steel girder bridge in the amount of one fifty-seven five twenty with additional alternate one to remove the existing bridge in the amount of twelve thousand for total of one sixty-nine five twenty with the addition, that Joe check with other landowners and work on that twelve thousand. If somebody wants that bridge, but if it's, nothing comes of it.
Did you say one oh seven or one fifty-seven?
One fifty-seven.
It's one oh seven, isn't it?
No, one fifty-seven.
One fifty-seven five twenty.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner, I was on the second part.
Yeah.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Just one question on the landowner, maybe sign a liability or something with that, a sign off that they have the liability on that bridge in case after, if they wanna buy it or take it from these guys. Um, just to be professional with that, instead of just give it with no make sense.
And I gotta check into our, our surplus uh, rules as well, so.
And the warranty, um, I'd like to at least see a, a year warranty on that, just to make sure all are decide on that HL nine, designed to make sure that's covered in areas that we on the concrete, the girders, different stuff.
Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
You just brought up another question in my mind too, and so did you, Joe. Is it are we under o- any obligation if we're gonna sell it to one person that we have to advertise it to everybody?
And that's what I gotta check with, check on, right? That's one of the, the stipulations we gotta check on, make sure we are able to do that.
Thank you.
Bottom line is if we can get rid of, we can get rid of it.
Correct.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Jack, for your, your time.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by LaCroy, second by Commissioner, uh, DeSant- uh, Ross Connect, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.